All right, let's go ahead and follow this plan township in order. We have some board members with us, well, they're from the change on. Supervisor Decker and Land Use Member Jerry Cracker and Calvin. And Land Use Member, or Paul Chriskey and Clerk Bobby Wegg. And I am Jeff Ryder. So let's go ahead and do a question.
Everybody is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice.
So thanks to our guests from Saltage and Knight Engineering. We, you're the second group who's got a solar farm plan in our township. And so we welcome your being here so that we can understand a little more of what your planners are, ask questions about the site and the property as you provide us with a handout. So if you'd like to describe your plans, we're all here and then we'll have insurance and questions for you.
Absolutely. Just at a high level, we provided a kind of a handout that's a PowerPoint presentation that we crammed off for you. It's just a background about Saltage. There's so many of these solar companies that are in Illinois right now. We just wanted to let you know who we are and what we're about. And then Bob here works for a firm called Knight Engineers and Architects based out of Chicago and we're working together. I'm the solar developer developing the solar project and Bob is a civil engineering professional engineer consultant. And Matt about Knight or?
Yeah, so Knight's a local company in Chicago. We have an office also in Will County in Bolbrook. We're in Springfield, so we're pretty much centered here in Illinois. We do have an office in Wisconsin as well, but primarily we do a lot of work in Will County, Cook County, Chicago area, northwest suburban area of Cook County, in the collar counties around Chicago. So we're very familiar with this area. We have contracts currently, we're working with Will County Forest Reserve District on some various, various design projects and review for them. So like I said, we're familiar with the county and so we're glad to be here talking about our project and putting it. So thanks for allowing us to do this.
And Saltage is a company, I live in Chicago. I've been working in the solar industry for about four years and the utility industry at large for about 10 years. I used to work for a company called Keywood Building Power Plants. And more recently, I've been in the solar industry building solar projects in about eight different states across the country, 51 different projects. And when Saltage, I recently joined their staff, they're based out of New Jersey. And they are a private company that develops, owns and operates solar assets. And one thing that sets Saltage apart from a lot of other solar development companies is they don't just spend money in the beginning to develop the project, get the permits and leave. We own and operate the system with something, that's how we grow our businesses. We build these solar projects all over the country and they're kind of like tiny power plants and we view them as an asset, just like any like ComEd or Amarin does with the generation they build. We build our solar generation and then we own and operate it for the duration of its life. So the duration of the life of this project here locally, we will be the owner and operator. So we don't just get the permit and interconnection and leave. We like to be a good steward, a good neighbor. And part of this process for us, we're looking forward to, you know, working with Will County, working with the township as much as possible to satisfy all your requirements and needs. Saltage is owned by a company called Tanaska out of Omaha, Nebraska. Tanaska is an independent power producer and they build a lot of power plants all over the country, all over the world even. Tanaska, as an independent power producer, they build a lot of natural gas generation all over the country. And they saw that, you know, natural gas prices are very low and a lot of companies are building natural gas generation, but they also saw the trend of solar being built all over the country as another viable form of ways of making generation of electricity and they decided to buy Saltage. We've been around since 2006. Tanaska bought us shortly thereafter. And in the 12 years that we've been in existence, we've built about $300 million worth of solar all across the country in roughly eight to nine states. Illinois hopefully being the ninth.
This is your first project in Illinois?
Not if this, this is one of a portfolio that we're building. We're working on helping these sites, but these will be our first.
Just to give you guys a background, we applied to Will County Land and Land Use and Development for a zoning special use permit for this site and two other sites in Will County. And the other two sites are Creeks Township. So this is the third of the three sites that we're looking at developing in Will County. So we're in the, we're in the process with Will County Land Use and Development for the permit and we're currently meeting some additional deliverables that they required, some documents that we needed to provide. So we made an initial submittal about two, three weeks ago and they came back with some comments and asked for some additional documents and we're in the process of providing that to them. There were things like lease agreements and different things, signed surveys, just little detail things which we have and we're in the process of ramping that up. So we should have all of these bills to Will County within the next couple of days, early next week, we're hoping. And they will be scheduling us for a potential zoning hearing. They have the land use committee meetings and the zoning hearing. They're currently telling us that they're very booked up and it'll probably be in September. So it will be on the schedule for zoning. So it's going to be a couple of months. So if this was part of the process, they wanted us to come out to the townships and meet with the locals and be able to present our project and allow you to ask questions and, you know, and find out what we're doing in the particular town. So we're here to answer any questions. We could talk a little bit about the development, a little bit more detail if you will allow us at this time.
I've got a question about what's attractive about each remote county that's intriguing to me that there's more.
Great question, more, great question.
Yeah, I can think.
One of the things about Will County is for a company like mine that is going to build a solar project, in the state of Illinois, to be out, there's an incentive at a state level that's kind of driving a lot of this development. And you need four key elements to have a project that's ready to be incentivized by the state. One is site control, meaning you have a piece of land and you have a lease in place or maybe you bought the property and that's where you're going to build it. You also need interconnection from the utility, from ComEd or Amarin. They need to give permission from me to connect the wires for my electricity to the wires to their electricity. And then fourth, I need a contract showing that I have a plan of how I'm going to sell the power on the grid, kind of a, you know, just documentation that I have a viable way to make money from this project. The state is looking for that, it's a key requirement. And the fourth and final is local permissions from township, from the county. And so Will County has a very proactive and solar friendly policy that has very specific rules and conditions about what you can and cannot do, especially with respect to solar. And they have about 16 conditions and just the fact that they have bylaw in place at the county level that says, here are the rules, if you follow these steps, you know, here's the process. And that kind of transparency and having it all in writing, that makes it attractive for us to come work with a place where we know they have a process and rules that we can follow and then kind of a legal process to kind of have everything go smoothly.
Why did you pick the particular site that you're showing on Pauling and Will Center?
It's a challenge to come and work all across the state and find people that are willing to host a site like this on their land. I'm going to be leasing this land from the landowners, the Zapia family. And a lot of people say no and some people say, yes, we're interested. And given what I just mentioned about the county being, having policies that promote solar and having local people that are willing to do business with me and enter into a lease agreement, that, that's kind of how I arrived at this location.
And how long is your lease period?
It's, the systems can last beyond like 25 to 30 years. And my, I think my lease goes 25 years and then there are different five-year increments to renew it for additional five-year blocks up to, I think, a total of 40 years.
Just to give you guys a little background too, on the site that Saltage would be leasing from the farmer, this current site is roughly about 25 acres, the parcel. And the actual area of the solar is about nine acres, a little less than 10 acres. Between nine and 10 acres is the actual location of where the solar will be built. So they're still going to have the remainder of their farm to farm, which they can do whatever they want, the farmer. But the farmer is allowing Saltage an agreement to put the solar on the, on the property of those 30, or 25 acres or so, position it in a way that would be favorable for connection to Commonwealth Edison Electric. So the location of this one is kind of centered right at the intersection of Pauling and Will Center Road, close to the electric facilities there. It will be screened with landscape screening, which is a requirement of Will County. So you would not really see it from the road, from that point of the road, it'll be screened with Arbor Righty and from what I understand, some kind of.
Right here, here, a visual screen.
Right.
Is this Pauling, this one?
Yep. Pauling is the one.
This is Pauling and this is Will Center and the screening will be on the edge.
And that's a requirement of Will County. They made that into orders, you have to provide it. So like I said, that site is roughly nine acres of solar, right there, roughly nine to 10 acres. Actually, this is 8.88 acres. And like I said, so the solar panels are roughly eight foot in height. This is what they call a fixed tilt system. So the solar panels are oriented towards the south, they'll remain in that general fixed position. And there will be native vegetation and plants planted between the rows of the solar. So you'll have natural grass, native grasses and plants planted between the solar panels so that increases infiltration into the ground. It's a positive thing for what we call best management practice, stormwater best management practice, because you're encouraging the water to go into the ground by planting deep rooted vegetation. The impact to the property is they drill, they drive metal posts into the ground about six to eight feet and they attach the solar panels on the, on the metal post that are in the ground. And so that's the impact to the soil.
But it does, the head does not rotate with the sun?
Not on this one.
Now, why is that? Because the other solar company that we talked to, they have rotating, right, right? So they're keeping the sun all day long.
Right, right. It's a case by case decision. You'll get with the other method that the other company is using, you get 10 or 15% more electricity from the same site. With the way I'm doing it, my way is a little cheaper in the beginning, so it's easier to finance like a lower cost. And for their advantage, they're able to get more sales per year from the same area. So over time, they're able to kind of build more for the same area. But mine is cheaper in the beginning. So it's kind of a case by case, you kind of weigh pros and cons based on what your company does. And one of the things my company wanted to avoid was the moving parts on the tracking systems. If they fail, you start losing, kind of lose that advantage and it's a risk. The technology's still getting figured out and we just wanted to go kind of just point them up to the south and that part of the sun kind of to the south and just kind of less moving parts, less headaches.
How many, how much energy do you process through to ComEd except you on a yearly basis?
I think it's about 400 pounds worth of electricity.
Two megawatt, yeah, it is. I mean, you're calling.
Yeah.
Two, two megawatts?
It's, okay.
Oh, it's a two megawatt AC site, that's the nameplate capacity, two megawatt AC. And that's equivalent to about the, the energy consumption over the course of a year, 400 pounds.
So what that means, and I didn't understand this at first when I was explaining, two megawatts is the peak power that it produces at like the maximum sunlight in the day. That's when the highest demand, like say in the summer when people are using their electricity for their conditioning or something, that's producing those two megawatts of power that would be providing the maximum of energy to the operating system.
Per year, two megawatts or per day?
No, that's, that's the peak.
A watt is a rate, power is either created or used. So that two megawatts is at like Bob said, it's peak ability to produce power at that rate.
So what, on a yearly basis, they're saying, you said possibly two megawatts or less times 365 days? I mean, I'm trying to get a yearly, six year.
Yeah, so.
I can give you like a kilowatt hour number.
Yeah.
Like in your electric bill, they really give you kilowatt hours. And this site's probably on order like 4 million kilowatt hours per year.
Can you describe the interconnectivity from the solar panels to your inverter or whatever the equipment is and then to the interconnect?
Yes. So you see there, there's kind of the rows, like you see the little rows of the black lines and those are different rows of the panels altogether. And we'll take a panel which, like the panel, a good estimate is like one of these tables, the surface of this table is about this.
I can carry it up and just walk it around.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just going to let you just take a piece of rope. I'm going to just walk it around while I'll just look at it. So these are the, this is the spacing between each one.
Yeah. Have your volumes.
These are fixed tilt, so they may be.
Okay, so this is, this angle up here is spacing.
This will be facing south. Yeah, so south will be.
We don't get much further.
No. See that two by?
Yeah.
Maybe we can run a bigger, closer look, it's a detail.
I'm turning it up in the balance with the satellite view so we can see houses.
Yeah, so the church, there's a rectory way up here, just to put it on a scale.
So here's the northeast.
This is a hundred, this, this distance is a hundred, so you can just figure out this is about five below, that's about 500 feet to the property line to the north, maybe more than 200 to the rectory, the church rectory to the north.
Yeah.
And then there's a subdivision way to the west, probably, I'm going to say maybe a thousand feet to the west. There's a team, I think there's, if you recall, is there a further part of the year where the tree line that runs along the houses that provide screening, but we are providing screening along the road here.
So you're providing the Arbor, you're similar screening on the road, but not to the west and north, which would be.
Current, current is not to the west or the north, the county didn't require it. If, you know, Saltage is always, you know, open to discussing that with the locals and if they had objections to something like that, they, they would consider that.
Yeah. Like that would be desirable.
You could extend it generally, like we're talking, there's.
Probably five.
Yeah, there is.
House to the west.
Where, where's the closest subdivision?
Okay, so there is a subdivision, you can even see it on here.
We're talking Heatherbrook.
He's got it up there. It's to the, to the west. There is a subdivision here, there is a.
Is that Heatherbrook?
Heatherbrook?
I don't know the name of it.
I can see it streaming right here.
Well, Heatherbrook is another.
So just, just from this, you guys, the solar development will go right here. It's in the corner over here. There's a church on the rectory up to the north and then just subdivision is to the west and it's about a mile. I'm going to say maybe over seven, eight hundred feet at least from here. Maybe more.
So you could put.
We could put.
The parameters around on the whole thing.
We can plant the whole thing. There is a fence around it, Will County requires a chain link fence with no barbed wire or anything, it's just a regular chain link fence. And you won't even see it with, like I said, with the screening on this side and if we extended it here.
Right, it would take it away from the subdivision too.
Yep, correct.
Which probably would be verbal to the people that live in that area.
Sure.
Right in the middle of runway 35.
Pardon?
It says right in the middle of runway 35.
Where's runway 35?
Well, that wasn't originally planned.
Oh, you're going to be, because no, the funny thing is, I just filed, no, I just, uh, Saltage, Will County required that we file a notification to the Federal Aviation Administration and I just literally did that last week. And the closest airport to this site is the Lansing Airport.
At the moment, you know, they've got a third airport plant right there. I mean, you're talking, we're talking hundreds of feet down the line.
Right, so the only, the only impact that I could see, and we talked this with the county, they are building electric poles to connect to the electric pole. And that's the highest thing that they're building. Other than that, these solar panels are eight feet in height. I mean, they're not going to affect any runway or anybody, you know. Like I said, the only thing with, with any concern, it's not even a concern, would be the pole, the electric pole that we're constructing to connect to the current electric poles that are out there already.
All right, so yours, your pole, is that yours, what you call your inductor?
Well, they call, they call, there's four different poles. They have a metering pole, a reclosure pole, I think they're on here, the names are, this connects pole and a rise pole.
Okay, so you're building a light pole and that's going to connect it to the ComEd?
Well, it wouldn't be a light pole, it would just be a utility pole.
Utility pole?
Yeah, like a utility pole with a wire that connects to ComEd, so.
And you have an application in your ComEd or?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. And that's a requirement, I believe, of Will County that they want to see that we have.
That's a question I have. I notice you have four criteria for coming in and getting permission from the locals and whatnot.
Yes, sir.
I'm CEO of ComEd and I've got a new nuclear power plant going in about 10 miles away. And I think that we can shut down all the, what is the catalyst to get you guys to go with ComEd? And is there a possibility that ComEd can do it? And if not, why?
That's a very complicated question, but one of the things that's driving all this solar development in the state is a state law that both, both parties, the bipartisan parties are vashing, agree to. And the governor signed, it's called FEJA, the Future Energy Jobs Act. And FEJA, F-E-J-A, the Future Energy Jobs Act. And it's a pretty complex bill that has a lot in it. One of, one of the things that FEJA had in it was kind of a bailout for ComEd to keep their nuclear plants open. ComEd was requesting to increase rates to rate fires to keep their nuclear plant online rather than retiring it. And in order to get that, and this is getting a little too political, one of the horse traits that was made was to allow solar development in the state. Because many states have something called an RPS, a renewable portfolio standard, and that's a commitment by the state from their legislature to develop kind of a broad toolkit of different renewables like solar, wind and hydro. And Illinois was very low. And part of ComEd getting those nuclear plants, kind of a life extension to keep them around for a little longer, they, they agreed and kind of worked behind the scenes and this bill was passed that has an incentive program for solar on ComEd's network, on Amarin's network and other details.
Really what you're saying, that ComEd is the least of your worries when you get these criteria, right? The local.
That's not completely true either, because I still have to go to ComEd and get their permission to connect mine.
But it's not automatic.
It's not automatic, it's, it's a process, it's a very technical process. And there's a lot of back and forth between myself, I'm an engineer, and their engineers. And we're changing the drawings and tweaking things to make sure that our system will be safe and perform as expected on that grid and not cause any disturbances.
But by and large, I think state law says that the energy owners have to use at least 4% solar power, is it 4% of the percentage I saw?
I can't recall the exact number, but one of the goals is to increase the percentage in Illinois that comes from solar.
So the trade-off is that if Commonwealth Edison allows them to keep their nuclear power plant or coal-fired power plant or whatever, whatever got tossed into the hand, they're allowed to do that as long as they allow solar companies to.
More or less, yeah. Yeah, and we just, they can't just, they set up some rules and.
Oh, sure, sure. But essentially, yes. But the bottom line is that, yeah, we'll let you do this if you let us do it.
That's, that's essentially what happened. That's my interpretation of the state law.
It requires utilities like ComEd to have 3.0 gigawatts GW of solar and energy mix. And that was passed December 16th, new legislation.
Right, yeah. So that's like three nuclear power plants worth of solar.
Now, when you generate the power, is it sold through the distribution network, whoever does Amarin, Commonwealth Edison, or it doesn't merely carry your power and you build it up?
They, it, that's a very complicated answer. They're all complicated.
No, they're a good question.
It's a great question. It will go on their network and it will go to their customers.
Yes.
And it'll go into your homes and places locally here that are connected to their local distribution network. But then it's up to me to kind of find customers that are in ComEd's territory to sign up with me to get some of my solar power and they get the credit on their bill.
And the reason I ask that is I can't tell you how many phone calls, emails and various contacts you get, sign up for solar power, green power and Commonwealth Edison will provide the power. You'll get the same bill from Commonwealth Edison, but the money will be going to the people that generate the power. And you just have to wonder, how does that really work? Because you don't know whether to trust it or.
Right.
So I'm glad we met face to face here.
Right, so I'm, I'm one of those companies, I'm not making those calls, like a well probably higher density that will do that and.
So you are actually as a company responsible for providing the customers to use the solar energy within these communities that are.
Within ComEd's territory, which they have 4 million customers all over the state. So I think I'll find some of those 4 million customers to sign up.
But it's something that if I decide, gee, that sounds like I maybe lowered my bill and I would have to actually sign up?
Yeah.
And then I, I'm actually signing up with you and having to pay you and.
You don't, you only have to pay ComEd, that's the kind of beauty of how it all works. It's like you still get your ComEd bill, you're still a ComEd customer, but you'll get credit on your bill for the solar power that I'm generating. So your bill is going to go down and that's where it's, it makes sense.
But they all say.
Those calls too?
I've got 680 acres right across the street from the complex and I'm going to, if anyone I can tie in directly to help me out on my farm, 600 something acres across the street from.
No. And I can answer why. It's just because we're directly tying into ComEd's grid. We wanted to interface with your connection to ComEd. It would have to be a completely separate process with ComEd to get the power.
What about, I got North American Power and it's a, a small company in ComEd structure called, yeah.
Is it like a co-op?
Right, yeah. And.
It's in Will County?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm just wondering, could I bypass ComEd because I'm already there with North American Power and tied directly into you?
I, I can't have anyone tie a correlation to me under the arrangement that I'm working with.
Jumper to you. Do you know that, perhaps it's not relevant for us commenting on this particular property, but this plan, but do you know how those sales are awarded? Meaning let's, you're only going to generate two megawatts. There's a lot more consumption, let's say in 100 mile radius. How is it determined, do you know, or is that established already on who can purchase it and who gets dibs on purchasing it? First come, first served.
There, there are rules within the, that FEJA program I mentioned, the Future Energy Jobs Act, there's something called the Adjustable Block Program and that's what I'm participating in. And so in the Adjustable Block Program, what I'm trying to do is build as many two megawatt DC sites like this all over Illinois. And then I have to apply with the state to get that. I need those four things I mentioned earlier, the site, the interconnection, permitting and the sales. And then the state will look at me having all four of those things and then they have a process for awarding the incentives that are kind of driving the developers to enter the process.
Okay, so I guess my question was more like, who is the consumer that is eligible to purchase it and on what basis? But if you can answer that, that'd be great. But a follow-up question is, for example, could the Moni Township? But a follow-up question is, for example, could the Moni Township be a candidate early on for our power here in this building? Or do we have to go through the general process to become a customer for this reduced rate of energy? And I know it's hypothetical a little bit, but...
I would say if this building is part of ComEd or you're a ComEd customer in this facility, then it would be possible to get power from this program for the Moni Township and their bills and utilities.
Be proud of them.
Yes.
Um, let's talk a little bit more. I think we can kind of bypass to a kind of construction and, you know, like last time we found out, you know, it's like they're doing a different type of solar thing. So maybe we need to answer some of the same questions we asked the other people who was, we're talking about how is this going to affect airplanes, the traffic, you know, the light and people's eyes and that type of thing? Noise?
Um, for the airplane issue, I think the common, Bob was talking about pole heights of the electric poles. That's not really too much of an issue because you have good poles all around us and the planes fly over. I think what a lot of people often are thinking of when they mention airplane traffic is glare or reflection.
Reflects the surface of your airplane.
Yeah, and so, part of how this technology works with solar power, you're trying to absorb as much light as possible. And so, one of the ways I like to describe it is in, in like the science of optics, there's something called a coefficient of reflection. And so, if you think of a mirror, when you're looking in the mirror, you see exactly what, all the light coming into it is coming back. And so, that's a coefficient of reflectance of one. So all the light goes in, all the light comes back. On my panels, I'm trying to capture as much of that light as possible to make the, the effect work that produces the electricity. And so, my coefficient of reflectance is 0.1. So 90% less than the light that's coming back to you from your mirror is kind of what is reflected from these panels.
So it will look very dark.
They're very dark. And they're made of silicon, which is kind of a sand that is very blue, but a very dark blue. And so, when you look at them, it almost looks like you're looking at a black surface. And you don't see a lot of reflection, just kind of think of like a black chalkboard, how much light it reflects. That's the kind of what's going on there. So reflection of like a shining light that blinds you is not so much of an issue on these as, as people kind of are sometimes thinking.
Would you say, Adam, that if the products that are available in your industry for this, you have the most non-reflective equipment that you use?
Yes.
Or somewhere different, or at a scale?
I'd say that most of the industry is on a scale that you're not getting a lot of reflection for a lot of these. Because we need the light.
And then noise?
Okay, noise from the operation of the system for the light, it's going to be very quiet. It's quieter than wind turbines, it's quieter than the refrigerator, or quieter, you can hear right now the compressor running. During construction, there will be some noise. Bob mentioned the steel posts that go into the ground. And those are, those are steel I-beams. And to put those in the ground, we need something called a pile driver. And it's basically like a big, like jackhammer on tank treads. And this construction process will be very short. It'll probably be like one month of heavy activity and then it's done. But probably for like one solid week of that, we'll have a pile driver on site, putting steel posts in the ground during some reasonable hours from probably seven or eight AM to five PM. But that, that would be the most noise that would come out of the site is when the steel posts are being driven into the dirt.
And then on a daily basis, a pit that's ever up and running?
Won't even, no, it's there.
Nothing like, even like the hum of a refrigerator or nothing?
I mean, there's a, there's a transformer that we use in our interconnection with ComEd's grid. Because we have to take the electricity that we produce and match the conditions that are on this distribution grid. And so, we have to match that voltage, which is a higher P of voltage. And so, we have a transformer that will have the hum that transformers have, but I usually can't hear those standing from the road from 50 feet away.
There's several grid forms.
Sorry? A set of transformers, yes. So we're going to take like 480 volt AC and step it up to match. This is probably like 12.147 kV, so 12,470 volts.
What's the size of one panel?
Um, in our system, 335 watt.
No, I mean in, uh, physical size.
Um, like 1.3 meter by 1.3 meters? Or six feet by three feet?
Six by three. Small.
What if any impact is there to wildlife?
Um, I don't think there would be much difference than the, the current agricultural use. But if anything, I think there's an improvement. And one of the things that, that we would do is, we would have a cover crop to maintain the top soil, have soil stabilization, reduce the water runoff. And a lot of times, what people in the solar industry use, and what we would like to do is have like a native pollinator habitat. So these are native prairie grasses that, that grow knee-high and are friendly to butterflies and bees. And it, and from my biased opinion, I think that's an improvement to the wildlife in, in this small 10 acre area that we're working on. During construction, it'll be a construction site, we'll have a silk fence around it, and it'll be disruptive to field mice or any kind of species that are habitating there. But that's probably...
I alluded just briefly about the benefits with this, stormwater runoff gets decreased as a result of the prairie plants going. So if you take a row crop, like a corne or a soybean, and you remove it and you put a prairie plant, the root system on a prairie can go six feet down into the ground. It's real deep and it draws the water down. And some of the benefits that we like to talk about with the solar is that 10 acres or that 8.8 acres of where the solar is going to be, you're not going to have any chemicals, you're not going to have any fertilizers or pesticides used in that area. So the water quality gets improved because of, people don't realize that farming does, you know, have a negative impact on water quality. Everything from soil erosion to, you know, chemicals and, and different toxins in the, in the water, so the groundwater supply. So this little area, this eight to 10 acres of solar will no longer be far, it'll be returned to like a native state with the plants around it. Obviously, the poles, you know, the poles are in the ground and the solar panels are up there. But the water will still be able to run off the solar panel, build between them, and flow into the ground and not have an increase in runoff. So it's a, it's a positive thing we'd like to promote and talk about, so.
Is it, is it maintenance free then? Do you mow it? Or is it grow naturally and get to a level where you don't have to have any...
Grows naturally and gets to the level where ideally you don't have to have somebody come out and mow it. For a long time, people were using turf grass. And the turf grass doesn't have any of these characteristics that we just mentioned. The turf grass is very shallow in structure, so we, we like to use the prairie grass. And they have to mow it in the beginning to get, get it to tape and stabilize it.
We're talking about your projects in Minnesota, have you developed a power program?
Yeah, I, I've built a lot of ground-based systems like this in Minnesota, Wisconsin. And we use a similar method with this prairie grass. And generally, it's, it's, in my opinion, it's very beautiful. There's little flowers and it's definitely something I think that looks attractive.
Do you have any history of any damage from any source to your panels? Severe snowstorm, high winds, tornado?
So, um, high winds could damage it, but with our civil engineers that we use and the structural engineers who design it, it withstands certain dust up to a certain level. And I would say this system's probably going to have a final design rating of 130 or 140 mile per hour winds. So it can withstand quite a bit of kind of a punch from the wind. But if it got hit with a tornado, that would mess the site up, it would, it would give damage. Hail, it can, it has a certain ability to withstand hail in the modules, they're kind of rated for a certain amount of impact. But if a soft, false sized piece came back, it'd probably make a crack, probably on it.
And it's heat-driven, so again, what about any severe ice and snow?
Uh, usually there's not accumulation of snow or ice on it, but as, as you mentioned, there is some kind of latent heat from the electricity flowing from, through it. Overnight, they're not working, so you can't get the snow building up then. But it usually just melts right off during the day during operation.
Have you ever had any complaints about people having problems with cell phones, phone lines, anything like that because of solar power in there?
I have not, no. Because basically, the electricity that we're producing, we're matching the global conditions of the grid that we're connecting with. The ComEd is very strict about that and they keep a close eye on that. So everything that we're producing is the exact same electricity that is on all around this right now.
And this basically is going to be, there's nobody on site, so there's no doubt that is, is there at all? And it's, and if something goes wrong, you'll be able to tell because of the electricity output or what?
We, we have remote monitoring capabilities on, on the performance. And so, the second it goes down, we know. And we can dispatch someone to take a look at why it's down. There's also a safety feature that's inherent on these systems, particularly with the inverters. So the solar produces DC electricity, and that's the same electricity in your cell phone battery, your car battery. And we take that DC electricity that goes in one direction and we invert it to AC like we use in our house and in this building. And the inverter device that takes that DC and changes it to AC, it had, we have monitoring systems connected to that. And so, we're able to watch the system and know if anything goes wrong. And that system also has some safety features where it can shut itself down if things go wrong on the site. Kind of like fuses or circuit breaker in your house, we have those per National Electric Code in the system. And another very important feature that it has from a safety perspective is if there's ever a power outage and the power goes out of your house, but the grid's down, our system will also go offline. Because ComEd's going to send somebody out to repair the grid, they're going to look at the wires. And we don't want them pumping our electricity onto the grid if it's down. So if there's a power outage and they've got alignment that's out there working, our system's offline. It goes offline the second it senses that the grid has a problem. Even if one phase of three phases is down, the system won't be good.
Questionally, how frequently do you see at sites like this, Jonathan, maintenance occurring, like somebody visiting the site?
I think my company's policy is generally three times a year that we send somebody for what we call preventative maintenance. And somebody will come out and kind of do an inspection and testing and walk the site three times a year.
And you can track with local companies?
Yes, we can track with some of the local...
Can you, can you tell at the moment in Will County, are you able to contract with Will County-based organizations?
It's too early for me to tell.
You said you have the matching. ComEd is pushing, say, one megawatt. Can you control ground to a half megawatt up to 50 megawatts to tie into whatever ComEd is pushing on these farm lines?
I think if I understood the question correctly, yes, possible. It's, solar is very scalable. It can go from, like you said, very small, like one megawatt up to 50 or higher.
Okay, so whatever's on ComEd's pole, you know, you're not worried about being able to match with the tie or load?
Oh, I think I, I think I see what you're saying. So there is, one of the things, like, one of the questions that was asked earlier was, how do we pick this site? And, and one thing besides some of the other characteristics I mentioned that's very important to us is the substation. And we try to site these somewhat close to a substation that's nearby within a few miles. And that substation is kind of a limiting factor. Because that substation, it's taking power from elsewhere where they're generating it, nuclear land, the gas plant, the coal plant, the wind, the solar. And it comes to the substation and then they take that voltage down to what we have on the wires outside this building. And there's a limit there, like you were saying. And we got, we can't go past that limit. So that's one of the things when I was talking about the process back and forth with ComEd is, they, they don't let us know if what we're putting on is too much for their system.
What do you think is the future of this? Look at tomorrow, 10, 15 years. ComEd and their history of doing everything right or wrong. And then you come along with a new guy on the block and this has tremendous possibilities. Do you see the day when maybe you're going to get together and push ComEd out and do it? Not not politically.
I think that companies like ComEd are smart. And they see that this is becoming a very cost competitive way of generating electricity. And I think in the future, they're going, they have a toolkit of ways that they through nuclear and gas and coal. And I think more and more, they're just going to find ways to integrate this as one of the tools and the tool blocks to make electricity.
So the more you make, the more they're going to be able to use it?
Yes.
Plus, plus they're, they're a distribution company, I mean, they distribute it. You know, we're producing it, giving it into their grid, but they're distributing it on all of the systems that you see ComEd.
So in that way, it's not a competition. We're kind of working together. I'm using their network of wires and they're using my cheap solar power on their network in their midst of power that they offer their customers. Because all the electricity out there, it's like a river. And this thing's just like a stream feeding into the river.
Does this system work very good and see how things are going?
Yes.
And the bridge there?
Yeah.
I just hear a horn.
Oh, well, I mean, this, this works all over the country, all over the world.
And, but you actually, I'm still stuck on that. You actually have to sell to customers yourself to then, so once you sign a customer up, then you have to take that to ComEd and then ComEd will then say, okay, you get 10% of this solar power and then this is what I'm going to rebuild and it'll show up on my bill that way.
Yep.
That's interesting way of doing it, that I'm, instead of just giving it to all the customers of ComEd. I just don't understand why not every ComEd customer can take advantage of some of the solar savings.
Right, it's a choice though for the individual customer to make if it makes sense for them.
But I mean, they very well be able to, we don't know yet. Because if it's offered to everybody in the state of Illinois, everybody in the state of Illinois says yes, you'll be throwing these things up as fast as you can.
That's a, that's a good point.
I, I live in Park Ridge, it's the north of Cook County, and our, our city had an opportunity to connect with a company, electric company called MC Square. And they set it up that if you don't do anything, it's going to connect with MC Square. So by default, you're connecting. And if you choose not to, you can opt out of that connection. So our city made a decision from a citywide perspective to have all of its residents connect up to this program or opt out. And so, I mean, there are other ways of, like you said, how do you go with an individual property owner, sell them electric? Well, sometimes there's programs that different municipalities could partake in.
So in the example he just gave, if you could do that method, and it would be possible for someone to sign up an entire city?
Right.
To be customers for our program. And that's just one example, there's a lot of different ways, but in Illinois, in that own market, there's a lot of options to do this.
Yeah, I've seen some of the ComEd substitute people try to sell that method.
And some of them, they, they're kind of snake oil salesmen.
See, I promise that, I just don't trust anybody that comes to me because I think they're going to have to pay ComEd to use their line, so eventually they're going to raise the rates and it's going to cost me more. So you say, I'm one of these very suspicious people that probably would say no.
So in my case, they had to sell the municipality. So they had to convince a group of aldermen that this was a program that we wanted to support. Rather than dealing with an individual property owner. I think that, the way that our city did it, I think would give you a little bit more comfort in my opinion, because you would feel that it was invented by the, the city board.
That's if you trust your city board.
If you don't trust, yeah. Well, right.
Or Tom Shipp.
Yeah.
And that's a company excluded.
And that's how, if I'm not sponsoring it, because I don't want all those calls telling me that they need it.
But you're going, you can face the same thing if you stay with CommOthetison and Exelon, and they said, well, you know, we need some more money to run our nuclear generators or our nuclear power plants. So we're going to raise the rates 10%. Do you have, do you have an alternate to that? You're stuck with it pretty much.
Yeah, but see, I always think, I look at my S and B. I look on that, there's MC Square, there's, uh, this company, that company, would solar give it beyond there?
Not right.
It would be, it would be a line item reference, a reduction or something.
Yeah.
It'll show up on your bill, but as a solar energy?
Yeah.
Reduction or something like that?
Reduction, yeah. Your bill would be less.
Where is the substation? Would this would think to, you know?
I, off the top of my head, I don't, I could find that out.
Just another note, this is just a little side note, we're working in a, in a community We're working in a, in a community near Danville, it's an incorporated Georgetown township in Vermilion County. And it's like a coal mining areas, one of the prominent coal mining areas in the state of Illinois. And they're going, they're, they're doing solar down there now with us. So, I, and the people understand it, they get it, they see the value in it. A lot of these people make their livelihood, or made their livelihood out of coal mine and the power, you know, producing plants that were, you know, using coal as a fuel source. And they're seeing the value in going with solar energy, so.
It's still north.
The substation?
It's a little bit north of your township and...
The one by 57.
It's like Wooddill, it's what they call it.
Thank you.
University Park used to be known as Wooddill.
Is this the Meyer area?
It's olden days.
No, I got, I've got the history. I've lived at that.
I'm just looking for the chance of building a university. And we're getting ready to put up two 26-story dormitories. I would like to come to a place like, say, we need enough power for 600 homes. Can we do it without going to risk?
It's technically feasible, yes. Absolutely.
You know, by the time you get those two units built, it could be entirely feasible because you don't know what the controls, Edison may say, the cost of fuel to run these power plants is getting so expensive, so dangerous, so the recycling of plutonium rods and all of it is so expensive, we're just gonna crash into solar and go with renewable energy and the other stuff can just reach a point of, the tipping point, they call it, it just won't be feasible anymore.
Cook County is a program where they're encouraging, like, municipalities to do smaller-scale solar, like a municipal building or something in the order of like a, like a small park district or something in Cook County where they would connect up to some solar facilities to run just specifically their, their facilities. And like Jonathan said, that would be a possibility. I'm not sure how that works, you know, from a larger scale, but like you were saying, but I know that people are doing that.
See, I was just afraid that regardless what I deem the use for four megawatts, you could not help me without going to ComEd. Because I need your type of energy, because I've been general to ComEd for 500 years and I'm still at zero. So, I'm taking a chance and going with you because I got the dome going up or not, you know, and we just, it's gonna be a massive university complex. And this would be a disaster.
But you have to run through ComEd lines or whatever local, whatever utility company runs that area.
I could build a microgrid that was disconnected from the grid.
And it would have a mixture of solar, it would have fuel levels and wind and natural
gas generation all together, and it would all, there would be a way to kind of optimize, like, when the sun's not shining, I rely on the gas, or when, when the sun's shining, I use less gas and less wind.
You're leasing your land for 25 years with option of five years increments, so 35 years. But what is the shelf life of the solar panels you sell?
Oh, 35, 40 years.
Okay, so then what happens after 35, 40 years? Is there something they're going to replace all solar panels, or you're just gonna fix the site and go?
So, at the end of the useful life of the site, we have some pretty strict language with the Will County ordinance about decommissioning the site or taking it apart. And Will County is very judicious about how we do that. So, we, Bob and I, in our submittals to Will County, we have to present them with a plan of what we would do, step by step, and what it would cost. And then for Will County, I think it also requires a bond that would cover the cost to rip everything out of the ground if my company's long gone. That bond is something that the county can use to take it apart.
So, so they're requiring that upfront now?
But a lot of people don't realize there is a lot of salvage value. I mean, people wouldn't just walk away from it. There's a lot of value in what's in the ground, what's in, uh, soil.
The steel and whatnot.
The cable, the electric.
The copper.
Right.
Given that your projections are to potentially get approval at the Will County Board level in September, what is your best guess estimate for when you could actually be under construction? And at a high level, what sort of steps or obstacles do you foresee facing following that September approval?
That's a great question. I would say the best case guess for we're gonna start construction on the site is after the winter in 2019. Probably March or April would be the earliest that we'll start construction. We'd wanna make sure winter's done so we can just go or cannot worry about have people off for weather. After the September 2018 meeting, I still have to get through the ComEd process, I have to have their permission. So, in addition to Will County and the township's permission, I need ComEd's permission, and that's probably my longest lead time item. And I'm anticipating that sometime in the fall. So, it might happen at the same time as the Will County Board decision, or it might happen later. And then additionally, I need the incentive from the state to, to make this particular project work for what we're looking for as, on the project. And I, the program that awards the incentives at the state level won't open until November, December. So, that's another major obstacle. So, one thing I wanna be very honest and upfront about is this project might not even happen, and some of the other ones as well, just because we need that incentive to kind of make the financials work that we're anticipating based on.
So, the state pays you with incentive, is that what you're saying?
The, actually, the state mandates the utilities pay us an incentive.
Do you know, is it determined definitively right now how long those incentives will last, and if so, how long will they last?
So, the way that they work is a 15-year incentive that gets paid out in accelerated fashion in the first few years. So, they're gonna pay it out in the beginning stages over the course of one, two, or three years, I think.
John? Oh, I don't understand that. It's a 15-year incentive for the payout, it's the first three years?
So, they amortize it, they look at a certain amount of that 15 years, and then they pay it out in an accelerated fashion over three years. So, the incentive's based on generation of electricity. And they look at 15 years of that generation, and they pay it out over a shorter timeframe. And I'm obligated to meet that 15-year target of what that is where I have to pay them back.
So, is it a business risk at year five or year 10 that it's still unusable to operate? And that could be a possibility that it might get removed prior to 25 or 26?
Yeah.
But you'd still have to bring the state back, that's a little...
Yeah. Yep. Here, there's a question, sir?
Yeah, I've got several questions. I know you might have covered part of this. Has there been any consideration or any intent to communicate with the residents that live in the vicinity of this solar power plant?
There has. As part of the Will County process, they send, I think they send the letter. In some cases, we send it, but in the Will County example, they send a letter to the people that are adjacent to the property. And the letter has kind of a description of what's gonna happen, the timeline of the approval process. And I think they give them my contact information.
Yeah, so a couple of things. What we've done already, we've not contacted any owners directly yet, but we've reached out to the township, to the county commissioners, the township highway commissioners, to the Will County Department of Transportation. So, we've got most of the municipal areas covered. We've applied for a special use permit to Will County land use development. And one of the requirements that they have is that the residents are notified of the hearing that will be in September, they'll, they'll get a letter and they'll be notified directly. There will be a, a notice in the newspaper, so they'll get direct information from that source. And then, so, Will County also requires that Soltage, as a, as a condition of their application, sends their decommissioning plan to every resident that's abutting the site. So, they have to sign off that they reviewed the decommissioning plan, that's a requirement of Will County. I wasn't aware of that until just recently, we started the process, and they're making that a requirement that we would be sending out. And we don't have to do that with the application, but before the special use permit would be granted, that would be a condition of, of the special.
Well, decommissioning is after the plant is built, right?
Well, no, even before.
At the very end.
Yeah, or, yeah, so what I've gotta say is, Will County requires that before they even give you approval to build anything, that you have to send that decommissioning plan to all the residents, and they have to agree that they've reviewed it. I don't, it wasn't clear that they have to approve it, just had to acknowledge that they received it. So, so basically, it's, it's the due diligence that you communicated your plan to remove the solar site if something was to happen in the event of...
To build it and to take it out.
Right, exactly. So, they wanna show that we're not gonna walk away from a development in their neighborhood and leave, you know, a half-built project, and they're gonna be stuck with something. I mean, that was a big concern to Will County, to the zoning board. I was at some of the earlier meetings in December, that was one of the big concerns was this decommissioning plan. They wanna make sure that you build something and you're responsible for building it, completing it, and in the event that it was decommissioned, that you would remove it to the satisfaction of Will County. So, that's all in there. Like Jonathan said, I think there's a bond, but the notification to the residents will occur through the zoning process.
Okay, I was thinking more in terms of a, a community-oriented meeting, in terms of letting, especially in that subdivision, it's to the, to the east, or was it, no, to the west of the solar power plant. In terms of notification, letting them know, hey, guys, look, we're getting ready to build a solar plant here? Was there, was there any thought?
I'll be honest with you, I'm not gonna speak to my point of view, but I honestly thought that this meeting was gonna be that.
That's all we can...
I thought that you guys were gonna have the residents here, we could talk to them and explain what we're doing.
We'd be willing to come back if you guys facilitate, to get people's input. That's something that we do quite a bit.
Because I believe that what you're referring to, the application is only to the property owners that are adjacent to the property. In the order you're referring to is somebody who would be impacted, who is a quarter mile away that probably wanna know.
That's a question, yeah.
So, we would be, I would say, more...
Because they might, they might go back to that, that makes sense.
Would there be any type of environmental study that'd be necessary to build it?
So, I could, I could talk about that a little bit, because I'm being tasked to do some of these environmental studies for Soltage, our company is. So, we did a PISA, which is a Phase One environmental site assessment. So, we evaluated the farmland at which we're building the solar and to determine if there's any hazardous materials out there, like any underground storage tanks, maybe abandoned farm fuel tanks that might be there from the past. And there's a record of these in Illinois, there's leaking underground storage tank records, EPA. So, we did that report for Soltage, that was the first report. Then, Will County has a very strict stormwater management ordinance that requires you to do an evaluation of the wetlands on the property. And we conducted a full wetland delineation of the site. We've conducted state historic preservation clearance review. So, what that is, you, you write the state of Illinois through the IDNR, you contact them, and you ask them to do the evaluation of this property to see if there's any historical archive, resources, archaeological resources, historical architectural resources, Native American dig resources that might be along the creek or something, on some of these. And all of the sites, with the exception of three that we're doing for Soltage, we did about 20 total for the state, came back that were, there was a potential. So, we had to hire an archaeologist on those three sites. Not anything in Will County, there was one up in Stevenson County, there was one in LaSalle County, and one in Danville. And then we had to hire an archaeologist to go out there and do a shoveling of the area that they thought might be a concern for, they actually thought there might be Native American burial sites on these farms that have been farmed for probably over 100 years.
NRI.
Yeah, right, so, yeah, then there's another step. So, Will County also requires that we do a natural resource inventory. So, we had to contract with the Soil and Water Conservation District of Will County, actually, it's North Cook, South, South Cook, North, South Cook, Will County Soil and Water Conservation District. And we got the resource conservation, conservationists on all three sites in Will County, and they did a report, a pretty thorough report, it's called an NRI. And then last thing we did, what we call an ECOCAT, which is, it's a dangerous species conservation with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. And we applied to the state to see if there's any endangered species on the site. And sometimes, on some of the sites, we had some things come up. On Will County, there was nothing. On these sites, one site we had in LaSalle County, it was along a creek, and there was a potential, like, plant that they thought there was, there's a bat in southern Illinois that they're concerned about. And this thing, sight of the bat, you can cut trees down in a certain period of the time of the year. So, there, there are things that you do get on these, these environmental investigations. So, yeah, the answer is yes, we did quite an exhaustive environmental list of studies and, and clearance is, so we've done the whole gamut. We will need, one of the requirements that we need for getting a, a building permit for Will County, we'll need what we call is a NPDEES permit, which is a Stormwater Discharge Natural Pollution Discharge Delineation System permit. So, when you construct anything on a site greater than one acre, you need to get this permit from the state of Illinois. And it requires you to imply, put in place erosion control measures, like, you know, soil erosion control measures, like erosion control blanket, silt fence, anything that you might consider to be, you know, protective of the resource. If there was a creek running along there, we might have certain types of protective measures that would be above and beyond just like silt fence. So, storm serbs or something like that would protect the alleys, maybe river, or something along those lines.
So, I know that you're leasing that property from a property owner?
Yeah.
Okay. If, I own the farm around that area?
Yes.
And I was farming, or I had a home in the subdivision?
Yes.
Would I expect my property values to go down, go up, or stay the same?
I don't, well, I'll be interested, because you, you've done some of the research on the studies and stuff.
So, there have been some studies that were performed by Department of Energy, National Environmental Energy Laboratory, that looked at this exhaust, really looking at real estate records. And they found that it did not have any negative effect, it did not. There is no correlation showing that one of these solar projects sited next to a residential or commercial property brought down its value. There are studies for people that put them on their houses that increases their home value. So, I think that's one of the biggest concerns, and it's a valid concern, is that if, if my house is next to this, is my property value gonna go down? And I don't think there's evidence to show that there is.
I know you spoke about a particular element within those solar panels, silicon.
Yes.
Okay, that's one of the elements on the periodic table of elements.
Yes.
Isn't that a hazard?
It is not, it's just like sand.
Silver.
So, it's all around us, it's...
So, there's no threat to public safety?
It's the most abundant element on our planet. There are panels that have different materials. There's a type of technology called thin film, and they use something called cadmium and telluride, two different elements together, a molecule of cadmium and telluride. And that's toxic, we don't use those, we use silicon-based panels, and it's not toxic.
Any communication with EPA about this site?
So, we work with, and maybe I should shut up while you talk.
No, go ahead.
The IDNR, the DO, the, the EPA, the I EPA, the Illinois EPA, we work with both of them on some of the permits that are required.
Yeah, we're gonna need permits.
Specifically that site?
This site, we're gonna need EPA NPDEES, NPDEES permits, because that's such a mouthful for me.
The Illinois Environmental Protective?
Yes, yes.
Yes, and it's, right, it's ID, because we're disturbing more than acre, it's a requirement in Illinois, you do develop, you disturb an acre, you need that permit. So, basically, the permit requires you to, to develop a stormwater management plan. And Will County is all over that, believe me, they have a stormwater management agency in Cook County. Will County, they're very strict, and we need, so, not only do we need a special use permit from Will County, which will allow us to proceed with the development, we need a land development permit from it. We need a highway permit from Will County Highway Department. So, there's multiple permits that, there's gonna be multiple reviews that are gonna be scrutinizing what we're doing here, and making sure that we follow the rules that are required by the various municipal regulatory agencies. So, yeah, here's another thing we haven't talked at all about, which, you guys are farmers and you probably appreciate what we're doing here. We are, we've already completed a complete wetland delineation, or, excuse me, a farm tile delineation of all, all the three sites in Will County. So, we had, we had... So, we had, we hired a company to do exploration of the farm tiles, and he's got a map, he's drawn up for us. And so, any farm tiles that may be impacted by the location of the solar panels and the metal posts will be either completely avoided or they'll be replaced and relocated around the solar. So, we have a plan to do that. So, a lot of the, a lot of the sites, and you guys, being farmers, would know, have drain tiles that run from property to property. I mean, I, I was, before I worked on solar, I did, I'm a stormwater engineer. I did a lot of hydraulic studies. Most of my career, I have done, doing stormwater management and drainage studies and various things. And I worked on projects in Cook County on various farms where there was drain tiles that ran from one property to the next until they got to the creek. And so, if you build something and you block the drain tile on the neighbor upstream of you, you could cut off his, his outlet for his drain tile. So, we're, Saltage has taken the extra step, and Will County does encourage that, but not all counties or agencies require that, is to go and do a full wet, or, I use wet, farm tile delineation, create an exhibit on behalf of the area. And you'd be surprised how many farm tiles are on these properties. They're small diameter, like four, six each diameter, but they're all, a lot of our old clay pipes, and so, we plan, as part of this development, is to identify those and to avoid anything that we obviously can avoid, and then to replace the clay with maybe a H, what they call an HDP, is a high-density polyethylene pipe. Usually, it's a corrugated pipe. You probably see six inches of, they come on a coil, and that's how the farmers replace their clay drain tiles. They use the plastic material now to use. But a lot of these areas wouldn't be able to be farmed if they didn't have those drain tiles on them, because the lands here in central Illinois are very hydrant. There's a lot of wet soils out here, but it was only because of the drain tiles that allowed them to be farmed. So, we don't have any plan to disconnect any of the farm tiles. We want to maintain them and their function. We may relocate around the solar, but the whole intent is to maintain the systems so the upstream and the downstream landowners will not be impacted.
Okay, because you know a lot of the people in that area depend upon well water.
Yeah. So, what we're doing, and I can stand by this, by removing 10 acres of farm where there's no pesticides, chemicals, or fertilizers being used in that 10 acres, we're going to restore that 10 acres to, to a higher quality of water. It's going to have a higher water quality as a result of the plants that we're putting in between the roads. And there's going to bring water into the ground better than it did before. And like I said, there's not going to be the use of any of those chemicals that would be harmful to the groundwater. So, I think it's a positive thing. It'll be a positive improvement to the groundwater in the area.
I want to ask a question. I appreciate your explanation, how far you guys are going. I assume you go step by step in this project. What step are we at this, how far have we gotten?
Sure, that's a great question. So, we're right now at the, we're, we currently submitted our special use permit to Will County. It's under consideration. They have, I would say, about 90% of the requirements for the permit application given to them. So, we, we, they gave us an ordinance. They said, here's what our requirements are. We gave them all the things that their requirements. Then, they came back to us and said, we want additional things. So, these things were not in their ordinance. These were things that they had. Their, their, their ordinance was just developed, I think, at the end of the year. So, this is all new to them too. So, this is a new process for them. So, they found out that there were other things that they wanted to have, like, for instance, the FAA notification that we had to do that was not in their ordinance, defining the notification to the township highway commissioners, wasn't in there. So, we did all these additional things. It took us a little bit more time. So, we're kind of like at the stage right now of getting on their schedule for zoning. So, we're trying to meet all their requirements. One of their requirements was to meet with you folks, to, to talk to the townships. They required that, that we meet with the townships before they would even consider at a zoning board hearing. So, and like Jonathan and I, thought we would be meeting with the residents as well as the board here. So, but that was a requirement, that they have a meeting, to be communicative to you guys and let you know what we're doing. And that was Will County's requirement. So, we're at the stage right now of completing all the due diligence items for Will County Special Use, and we expect to be on their zoning hearing scheduled for the month of September. They're, they're that, they've built a backlog with zoning meetings for the next two, three months. So, and then, like Jonathan said, if we get approval from them in September, which we hope we get, we anticipate applying for all of the permits that we talked about, we're going to need a site development permit from Will County. So, in addition to this special use permit, we need a site development permit, which will scrutinize everything that we're doing, like, how are you building your, how are you affecting your, your, the grading of the plans? How is the drive, the access road going to be built? Where, you know, how are you impacting any wetlands on the site? So, we have to provide all of that due diligence to them, and they provide a very detailed plan, go through that process. Then, we need the highway access permit from Will County Department of Transportation for an access service road. It's a gravel road. It's kind of like a farm entrance that we built. Probably need a culvert under the farm.
I think we'll be working with our highway commissioner on that.
Yeah, we've already been with, well, in this case, interestingly enough, these are not, oh, yeah, this is, this is Moni Township. Moni Township, these are not Moni Township roads. These are Will County roads.
But if you're getting a, building a culvert and an access into your property, that would be Moni Township?
Yeah, but only if those are his jurisdiction.
That is, his jurisdiction is within, if you're, is in that area. That's all part of Moni Township.
Okay, so, we, we met with the Will County Department of Transportation, and we communicated with them this project, and he signed a number of, a number of random letters.
You might find that a little bit more, would they go to our highway commissioner?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, my understanding was that this was not the township. This is a Will County road, but he might have an agreement that he issues the permits for the township.
I know he has to do with the culverts. Have you done anything with the culverts in Moni Township? That's, I'm sure that would be his.
Yeah.
And your entrance is on which road?
So, the entrance is going to be, actually, it's on West Pauling Road there, on the south, right here.
Right there.
Yeah, just a little.
Over there?
Yeah. Yeah, you can't really see it real well out here. It's actually better, more clearly defined on our, it's on our site plan. You can see it. Actually, I take that big, it's right, it's right here. I apologize. I was looking over here. It's right here in the center. So, right up the south.
John, I have a question that you said you've been with solar for five, six years, and before that, you've been in solar energy for a number of years. My question is that the company that does the same thing, that doesn't maintain and keep it, what do they do with their, with their sites?
So, the companies like mine, I'll, I'll buy, like, the other company that's here, I'll probably buy their site, and my company will own and operate that site.
Both sites, and the one you build in place the one you bought?
Now, do they show that in your comment, directly comment?
We comment on and operate a solar site, this one.
Right. They don't really now, but they may in the future.
And what is, from your point of view, since you've been on both sides of the fence, what's the better system, what better way to go, to build and maintain, or to build and sell?
The guys that build and sell, it's a way to make a quick buck, because they can mark up the, once they get the permit, permission from the utility, that's worth a lot to somebody like me that really wants to build and then own and operate. But I like to own and operate, because it's how our business grows, is building more sustainable solar all over the world.
You know, John, one of the questions that I had, I posed to previous companies, is that you build a site, fence it in, it's monitored 24/7 from a remote site. There's nobody on site.
Correct.
Monitoring.
Correct.
Nobody, no physical body with communication equipment to notify the Will County Sheriff or the Moni Police Department. Nobody.
No.
So, how much have you had any trouble with your sites in the past with that?
Can you define trouble?
Damage, vandalism?
No.
Burden please.
No.
No, what's there?
Usually, the trouble that we have is that top corner road will go out, and it's not producing. And if it's not producing, it's not making money. And that's the kind of trouble we get. It's like, oh, why did it go down? Send somebody out to kind of investigate. A local technician will do some tests, and oh, the user now replaces it.
So, when that happens, so you, you know a lot, you get a remote message?
Yes, sir.
Will County, I should say, does have a requirement for a emergency services plan, and we had to develop a pretty exhaustive plan for them, put it in writing and send it to them, so it's part of this process. So, just, there's the shut-off switches and things like that that have to be defined and identified on the, on the site and on the schematic, the electric schematic, and that's all the requirement that Will, Will County has as part of their permitting requirements.
So, you guys wouldn't have anybody periodically patrolling that area?
We just have a maintenance team that would come out three times a year. Comment would have some folks come out periodically, probably more so than my company, to look at their equipment, because my company will touch their equipment, and they'll, they'll look, they'll inspect their equipment.
Your home is in New Jersey?
My company is based up in Jersey City, New Jersey. I live in Chicago.
Oh.
I'm from Arkansas though.
Did you say you have a meeting that's done?
Yes. We probably, we probably even need about 15 or 20 minutes to get there, so maybe get five or 10 more minutes. We're going to the creek next, after this.
Any other questions?
Just, is there anything that we haven't asked you that is normally asked, or that we, we should know?
I'll have to say, we've done probably about eight or nine of these meetings today, maybe not quite, maybe about seven. But you guys had the most well-thought-out questions, and I compliment you guys. No, really, very intelligent questions that challenged us, because I, we didn't get these kinds of questions at some of the other, you know, hearings. I should say, also, we, we had hearings, we had a township meeting in Georgetown, Don, where I said, with Cole, my name town was, and they were more concerned about, you know, how it affected them locally. Just, it was more resident-based. But you guys had a lot of great questions that challenged us, and I think we learn from every one of these meetings that we go to. And so...
I, I would only add, unfortunately, there's a lot of risk with these projects in terms of whether they will happen or not. And as much as I would like for it to happen, there's a chance that it won't. Probably, you know, like a flip of a coin almost in terms of all the steps that I have to go through to get it to happen. So, I think that's another thing too, is that myself or any other company that comes through here, there's a very real possibility that all these might happen. We hope that they do, because I think it will translate to some additional tax revenue to the counties, to the townships, but there's a, there's a strong chance that it won't happen too.
And your profit comes fully from comment?
What was it? I'm sorry.
The profit margin for putting these up here. I'm trying to understand your incentive for doing it, it's all over everywhere.
That, that's part of it. It's not the sole, there's a federal tax incentive as well that our country gives, like, so anytime someone builds one of these systems, 30% of the build cost is a tax credit, and that's a big incentive, first of all.
How much is the price tag for the project?
Uh...
Estimate?
Estimate.
What's the construction?
This is probably like somewhere in the $3 to $3.5 million project.
Are there any areas, any areas that are more likely to be passed to other areas?
Oh, like, to not build on, or?
Well, you said it's a flip of a coin.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Is there a likelihood that you'll get a positive reaction and a chance to build in one location versus the other location?
It's a good question. We, we did five different presentations in Stevenson County, which is up north, near Rockford, kind of that, that, it was up there, and we presented five of them, and one was rejected, and four were approved. And they're very solar-friendly up there. So, and the reason why the one site didn't get approved was they had a lot of, they told us it was a lot of drainage concerns. There was floodplains nearby, and there was some concerns about residents that lived close by, and they were worried about, you know, the location of their property. So, we were, we were denied. But in general, that, that was a more, I should say, they were, they appeared to be a little bit more favorable towards solar or supportive of it than some of the other counties.
More outlying areas from metropolitan are more likely to say okay?
Yeah, so, that's a good question. In my opinion, you know, I've been an engineer for almost 34 years over that. When you get towards, like, a municipal area, like Will County's close to Chicago, it's close to, to, you know, a higher density, you get a little bit more difficult zoning requirements. I mean, Will County put us through the wringer, by the way. They have a very, they have one of the most strictest processes for going through a special use permit in terms of the due diligence that's required. When you get out to, like Georgetown, they had very little, in the sense, they had a solar ordinance that they crafted, and they asked us to do certain things. But, but the point I'm trying to say is, when you get closer to the municipal areas of a big city, they tend to have a lot more restrictions and requirements with their processes. Their permitting is a lot more difficult, more challenging. So, you know, if you ask me, like, if we could build all our sites in the Stevenson County area, because we felt, you know, they, they had a good process for allowing these things to go through, and they weren't, like, demanding, like, all these different requirements like Will County does. So, like I said, you can thank Will County, they have a very, very strict process in Illinois compared to other counties.
That's exactly what I was saying.
Yeah, so...
You know, I got one final question that I, I'll be pleased. I know you spoke about tax revenue going back to the county, and I know you spoke about the ultimate savings in the electric bill. But does Saltage ever invest in community activities on the residents?
That's a good question.
The short answer, I'm sorry, is we haven't. It's something I think we should think about. And I, I've, I've heard that question before, and I think that's, that's something I'm going to take back from this meeting to my company and share with them, that we should think about that, of like, you know, in addition to the benefits of the environment or lowering power levels or tax revenue, how can we be for neighbors? And I, I think that's an important point. So, thank you for bringing that up. We probably need to cut the road, build a new creek.
Thank you so much. You've offered a lot of good information in addition to what we have, so...
Thank you for having us. We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll see you in a week.
Yeah, it's great, great. Great questions, and hopefully, we give you good answers. I don't know, you know, I stumble over my words sometimes when I get a lot of thoughts on my head, but it's a very...
So, you need me to grab any of them?
Yeah, I guess, I'll grab the, you should hold it down.
And, and the risk, because from people I've talked with around the country who work on these projects, they all say that it is highly risky and even, so we may never see it.
I mean, I was very honest with them, I think. That was good, because, you know, we really hadn't kind of heard that. We knew the other process was good that happened, maybe by the middle of 2017, 2019, I mean, and they're saying, yeah, maybe 2019, you know, maybe not, ever.
Right. And another thing that I think was valuable to, to hear was that I think we should offer the residents, residents of that subdivision be able to come if they wanted to, or provide a link to this video.
Yes.
And thereafter, see if they had an interest. I would think, whoever is proud would be instrumental in, you know, facilitating that a little bit.
Actually, you know, we have a newsletter that goes out in July, and so, basically, what we could do is just put a little blurb in there. If you're interested in the solar energy meeting, the plan commission had with this group that's, you know, on such, such a corner, you can turn into WPAL, blah, 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 and, you know, and give them the site. And of course, that site's in our newsletter anyway.
Right. Would you, would you also say what the decision was?
Well, we're not making a decision, and they have to come back. We don't do anything yet until, they, they haven't yet gotten anything from the Land Use Committee, and the Land Use Committee has to set up their appointment, which they're saying is until September. And then, I think that once we get information from the Land Use Committee, that they are going to have, I mean, that's... going to have, I mean, that's when, you know, you probably want to meet again, review everything and decide whether you want to say yay or nay, you know.
Well, why would, what we do here, have to wait on somebody else if we deem that, you know, the presentation that we got so far has been perfect as far as we're concerned and I see no adverse effect to putting in where they want to put it in?
Well, I think we have to know their case numbers, you know, we have to have everything that they've sent to us, like the last time it was.
Technical paperwork, yes.
Yeah, that's basically what it is. Now, you can make a decision tonight if you wanted to, to say that. The other thing is, is that when I was talking to the attorney at our last meeting, I had, you know, he said to me very quietly, because when I was saying that normally what happens with the plan commission is that we're asking for a zoning change, that you, then instead of passing the county board by a simple majority, they have to pass by three quarters of a majority. And he said, this is not a zoning change, this is just a special use permit of agriculture. He said, I don't think that that applies to that. So I don't think that any decision we make is going to change how the county board votes on it.
It's really a public service.
Yes.
You know, process, which I think is still valuable for the people who live in that area. And in addition to that though, if it gets as far as the county reviewing it, anyone from the public can go to that meeting.
Yes.
That's true, that's true. You can be part of that before.
Right, and so they're going to put in them, yes.
Exactly. And if you have strong voices, enough people show up to do it, you can sway the county one way or the other.
Right.
Yeah, like you said, a public service. It's just that they don't, it's that the people who are not, their property is not adjacent, they might not be, ever be notified because there's no obligation to. Well, yeah, no, I understand what you're saying. So the notification process to them is important, that they have the information that they can review either online or, you know, come to a meeting of some sort. And that's where they can really impact things, is what you're saying.
Right, yeah.
So do you, guys want to make a decision today, or what are you doing?
Well, I, I personally, I think we should, at least since we had some conversations with trustee Brown after the last meeting, he had some concerns about this, I think we should be able to get some input from, let's say, your, your board or him as potentially a resident of that community, that subdivision there. And I think, you know, it might not change anything that we would decide here tonight, but I think that would be wise and valid. What do you, what do you, John, think? I think that what we heard here today is, has possibilities and I'm totally behind the, the solar end of it and renewable energy and the fact that they can offer it and have people in the area actually benefit from it is a big plus. However, if the people that are going to be directly impacted by it, you know, around the area have some concerns that we had not thought of because we don't live right next to it, then I would say that, that would probably trump whatever I feel, but as far as far I've heard here, I'd say yes. Calvin, very good. Any other?
I wasn't here to see the objection of Mr. Brown the last time, so I don't know if you, if you.
And he wasn't present at this meeting? It was more of a dialogue after the last board meeting?
With a good bad.
He, he was concerned that he, he and fellow residents of that subdivision would be aware of all the implications. I think that's the big deal.
But then he also was president of their homeowners association there, so he could, and he can, you know, disseminate that information too.
Yeah, yeah.
And he was aware of this meeting today too. So that, I mean, I informed.
You said he was aware?
Yes, I informed all the board members and told them what it was and asked, you know, to make it come or not come, you know.
Well, that might be, that might be a, a simple conversation with the homeowners association and see if they have any further input or questions.
And maybe Mrs. Marraff, when will this be on Facebook or YouTube?
I don't know. I can tell you that the zoning, the planning and zoning Will County Board meeting that took place on Tuesday, that should be up tomorrow, and that's about the other, the other solar farm. And that should be up on YouTube tomorrow, or the day after. But I cannot tell you when this one will be up.
Oh, you know, within a week.
I can't, I, I can't say.
Can't guarantee it, but we can just basically, yeah, I have a board meeting a week from tonight, and I can suggest that people go on the site and Maurice can maybe look at it and hear everything that's been said. And maybe then if you come to that meeting, you could ask Maurice if he could get hold of you and, and maybe take a poll of someone, just, and ask them to all look at it or something.
Well, I mean, it's two weeks from tonight.
Two weeks from tonight.
Can I point out that at this?
I didn't even want to first, you're right, did you?
Can I just point out that at this meeting, it was not open to comments from the public? That's all.
The meeting that we had was our regular board meeting and we did have public comments. It's just that when we board discusses things on our agenda, it is not a discussion time for anybody but board members. And that's the way that meeting ran.
What about this meeting?
This meeting is the same thing unless Jeff as moderator would ask somebody question, you know? Or, well, this is a little bit different because, like, well, I'm, I'm ex officia of every board, of every, you know, commission. But like if, you know, Bobby and James wanted to say something, we invited them to sit in on.
Right, so this was open to the public.
It's, that is, that's why we posted it, it has to be posted, that's why we sent the press information.
Okay.
And that's why we had press here. And, and so that's how the, you know, public is getting out. But it's just that we do not, there is no public comment section on this plan commission meeting. There is a public comment session at every board meeting where people can sit and talk about agenda items or any items they want to talk about. Just that when we get into the board discussion part, we do not allow public discussion at that time.
As for this topic, I have no objections to it, with the exception of what input, you know, presidents might have that might be valuable to add to it.
So what do you want to do?
I think it's a goal, as far as I'm concerned, providing the necessary paperwork that you said we have to have. You know, that's only, I see, holding us up.
Well, then we'll leave it up to Jeff then? I mean, you know that Calvin helped you, I think?
I feel like Jeff, I let the residents have some objection, so.
I think I'd be interested in hearing from the homeowners association to see if they want to have this group back or attend another meeting where they might be, I think I'd get the information first again. I think I'd prefer that before we, you know.
Well, let's wait till then that our, you can either reach out to Maurice yourself or we can wait until our board meeting on 21st, I believe, and ask him.
I will, I will do that, I will reach out to him.
Very informative.
Yeah. Well, then, I will say that our exit meeting adjourned.
Unless anybody has anything else, go ahead.
All right, adjourned.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.